We are ready, Mayor.
Let's go ahead and call to order. The, uh.
Who's calling?
Who's leading the meeting?
Com- Plan Workshop at 5:00 PM. Uh, roll call, please. That's clear.
Councilman Werner. Councilman Gleason.
Present.
Councilwoman Leonard.
Present.
Vice Mr. Lingowski. Mayor O'Connor.
Presence.
We have a form.
Stand and join me to order pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the public who stands on this nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Seated. Have the Forest of Com Plan update. Capital improvement, infrastructure, education. Oh, now, let's have the presentation, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember for the record of the state plan for the city of Westlake. Today, we're going to be presenting before you the second workshop for the Com Plan, comprehensive plan for the city. In this workshop, we're going to be focusing on three elements. The transportation element, the capital improvement element, and infrastructure elements. So again, a brief summary, we're talking about the city's comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2018 through ordinance 2017-7. We, uh, we did the first workshop on September 2nd. I'm sorry, August 5th was the first workshop where we looked at the administrative, administrative, future land use and housing elements. And we're moving on to the second workshop. Again, this is just the procedure and the dates that will follow. After all the workshops are done, we are foreseeing to have the LPA and this first reading of City Council in December 2nd. Uh, then we'll submit to the state and within 60 days of the report that we get from the state will hopefully be adopting the new Com Plan by March or February. Again, these are all the elements of the city's Com Plan. Again, only transportation, infrastructure, capital improvements for this workshop. This is just a recap of the first workshop where we talked about the population. This is a future land use map. And then some of the updated policies, the main, the main policy required by the state is that all the planning periods now need to be, need to reflect a 10-year and 20-year planning horizons instead of what used to be five and 10 years. And then we'll get into our workshop for the first portion. It's going to be capital improvement, infrastructure, and for that we'll have the Bram, which is the Sid engineer.
Thank you, Ozzy. So, uh, just for the record, Ryan Wheeler, Paul Finney Wheeler, and Sid Board Engineer. Or Sid Board Engineer, Sid Engineer. So, you know, as Ozzy, we're at kind of recap, we're at the second workshop here talking about, you know, the infrastructure and that type of stuff. So that's, you know, from, from our perspective, from the Sid side, you know, working hand in hand with Ozzy and his team, going through and doing, you know, all the updates. And so what we kind of have to do from, from our side, from Sid's perspective, working together with the city, is, you know, make sure that we're providing, you know, the service and the requirements that are needed for, you know, not only the city today, but what the city could be in the future. So as you see here, we have our, you know, current Sid, Sid map here. And this is just kind of the existing residential customers that we are, you know, services being provided to today from Sid. So, um, you know, as we, as we spoke about our, you know, responsibility is not only for these existing customers, but also for the future, um, you know, residents, stuff that will be here within the city of Westlake and within the Seminole Improvement District Service area. So the two goals that we had to look at when we're doing these updates for, for the Com Plan is, you know, from, from our specific side is the capital improvement elements and the infrastructure elements. So from the capital improvement side, we, you know, are here to ensure that the timely and efficient provision of adequate public facilities for existing and future residents on the capital improvement side. And then for the infrastructure side is to provide and maintain the necessary public infrastructure for potable water, wastewater reuse, water drainage, solid waste, aquifer recharge in a manner that will encourage a sustainable community. So these are basically the goals that we have to ensure, um, you know, are, you know, will be provided to everyone in the future. So this is kind of the five years, part of the company, you know, improvements that we have to do is the items that we feel, um, you know, are going to be within our five-year capital improvements map. So if you see, there's really not a whole lot left within the next five years. You know, just because of how much stuff has changed since the last time we did this update. So as you see, it just kind of has a breakdown of, you know, as we sit today, you know, the estimated fiscal year when we potentially could be looking at doing, um, you know, the, the future projects and, you know, some of the colors you'll see specifically to the park site, there's kind of some, you know, multiple colors. That's just because, you know, the improvements are, as of, as we sit today, potentially going to be spread over, you know, a couple fiscal years. So, you know, as part of the improvements and the capital improvements that we have to do is we have to, we have to come up with these costs. These are basically the costs for all those items that you saw on the chart before. You know, specific to the, um, you know, areas for the, for the capital improvements that are specific to Sid. Next item here we have is our kind of stormwater and road system. It has a breakdown of basically the existing roads along with, you know, potentially ultimately what could, you know, be within, within the city slash Sid boundaries. The last time you guys would have seen this back when we did the previous Com Plan updates, everything's still fairly similar, but obviously stuff changes as it's going. So, um, you know, obviously there are some differences, but for all intents and purposes, what, what you see here has been, you know, kind of on these, these previous maps, um, you know, on, on the previous update. This map here, so the last one was the roads and the stormwater this year is on the potable water side. You know, just kind of showing the existing slash proposed, uh, you know, improvements that, you know, we anticipate in, you know, the, the, up to the 2045 capital improvements. Next up here is just kind of the same thing as the water, but on the wastewater side. Next one here is on the, on the reuse side. So we, you know, have road storm and drainage, water, wastewater and reuse. So like I said, we, we have to basically, you know, project along with design and be ready for any, any changes that could happen. So every, every single time a, a new project comes on or we have something like this, we have to do some long, long range planning. You know, we have to update all of our models and make sure that, um, you know, not only do we have, you know, the capacity for the existing residents, but also that the future resident have the service and there's no impact on, on, on any of the existing residents. Yes.
Do you mind any questions?
No, no, not at all.
Oh, you're done?
No, no, yeah, yeah. But I can go to any slide.
I have a few questions.
Yeah.
Wouldn't mind entertaining me.
Not at all.
A minute. Where does our water come from?
So our water comes from, we have an interlocal agreement with Palm Beach County Water Utilities. So let me go to, if you see here on this screen, um, that, that's on the slide right now. This has all of our, um, you know, existing slash proposed or potential connection points that we have. So currently along Seminole Pratt Whitney, we have those four connections where we are, you know, connected and metered with Palm Beach County Water Utilities, and that's where we get our water. We also have a fifth connection up on the northeast corner up by the middle school and the elementary school.
So Seminole Pratt provides us with the water main in the sewer as well?
Correct.
Where, where is the sewer, sewage treated?
So the sewer goes and it just, you know, connects into the city of West Palm Beach. The city of West Palm Beach slash Palm Beach County Water Utilities. So it's, it's, once it leaves our district.
Straight at east of the highway, east of, um.
On 95 there.
Turnpike.
Okay.
The domain facilities.
All right. And the irrigation lines and the reuse water, you showed the slide up there. Is that something that Sid collects?
So we have same thing. We have an interlocal agreement with Palm Beach County Water Utilities. So the only thing that's a little different from that with Palm Beach County Water Utilities is we're a secondary user. So, well, not a secondary, but we're basically in line, like when they're supplying the reused water. FPL for their plant out to the, to the west of us, they have basically the first rights of refusal. So Palm Beach County Water Utilities, and we've never had an issue, I don't think, where they've, you know, taken too much water, but we don't have enough. But just to, to make sure that we don't have an issue, that's why we've, we've gone through and done the, um, you know, the, the re, you know, not only for just the, uh, you know, or previous areas that we've been adding through the developments, but also just to have that backup in case we don't have the issue through, you know, the, the water through from FPL.
And the irrigation, the reuse of the irrigation water is used mainly for the landscaping along the public streets? Or is it also for homes?
Also, correct, also for the homes and businesses.
They're required.
Correct, yes.
Uh, that's all. Thanks.
I have a question about transportation and long-term transportation planning.
Yeah.
You know, the first time ever, the county is having a master county transportation plan. And also for the first time ever, they're, they're integrating the needs and wants of the municipalities. Um, and it appears that they're actually really working together very well now.
Yeah.
I had a, uh, one of the consultants who's worked on the project reach out to me and, yeah, mentioned that uh, some of the municipalities aren't really communicating the needs and the wants for them to include into the master transportation plan. Is that something that Sid is taking the reins on? Have you guys been in contact with it?
So, so yes and no. So the next part of the presentation will, will be.
Getting ahead.
Yeah, no, so, um, but it's a, a nice segue when it does become the segue point. But, um, no, so we, you know, you know, sort of work hand in hand, but the, the jurisdiction and, and the, the design and stuff like that falls under the, under the city umbrella. You know, with that being said, anytime that there's something, you know.
Even though it's this one.
Correct, yeah, exactly. Um, and I believe that kind of comes to, you know, back when the original.
Interlocal.
Interlocal agreement was done. And, you know, maybe policing power and stuff like that, it was determined that it was better to be under the, the city umbrella, but I'm not sure about that. But, um, you know, that, that, we do have that conversation that, that goes on. You know, for instance, when we're doing parks or scheduling of parks and, you know, bringing trips and stuff like that, that's all being reviewed by both the city and Sid so that it's, you know.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor and Council, also on that note, uh, we have received several inquiries from the consultants. Tuha has responded to some, I have responded to some. Some of the questions they're asking don't make sense in any way, shape or form, but they're asking them. I'm not sure they're knowing what they're asking for or know what they want to know. So it's, it's kind of a, find your way through the dark. Hopefully we'll all find the path together, but it's, it's not a very clear questions that we're receiving from the consultants to get the answers. We're giving them the answers the best we can based upon what they're asking.
I see. Okay.
So they need to ask better questions.
And it is, it is, when you think about it, it is a extremely monumental task to after the fact, try to figure out what your transportation needs are. They've known it for a long time, but they ignored it, and now they're trying to play catch up. And it's extremely difficult. Tuha can attest to that. She's been working with them for a long time.
The fact that they're including municipalities is huge.
At least it shows some, some type of foresight.
First time I've ever seen that.
Yeah.
I have one more infrastructure question. On the potable water, does Sid test and treat? Or is that done by West Palm Beach?
No, so we're, we're required, um, you know, by the DEP rules to do our own, you know, independent testing that goes along with Palm Beach County Water Utilities who does deliver us their water. But there's, you know, reporting and testing that we have to do and submit to, to DEP.
And where do you do the treatment?
We, we don't, we don't do any treatment. We do testing only. All the treatment is done by Palm Beach County.
Okay.
At their water utilities department.
When you test it, do you make sure it meets the right parameters?
We test, uh, every day, sample points at all the entry points into the city. We check for free chlorine, total chlorine. Forget the other, there are two other tests that we can do, total dissolved solids. Plus then we have a monthly tested at the, at the entry points that has a whole list of parameters. We also issue on an annual basis, it's on the Sid's website now, is what they call Consumer Confidence Report. It's on there, which is basically tells you everything you need to know about the water that's being received within the city limits.
I'm thinking, good to know. Have we had any issues in the last year or two?
No, I mean, we, they'll be, so we, you know, we're required to do testing throughout the entire, you know, boundary of our system where we have. So, you know, obviously as we're growing, we're trying to, you know, make sure that we're adding those points and switching those points around. You know, every once in a while that, you know, within the Sid system, there's been some, some stuff within the schools that are after our point of service. But we still, um, you know, inform the school, tell them to switch out their faucets and stuff like that. But that, it's after, you know, after the meter within their thing. But we at least inform them and say, hey, this is what our recommendation is.
Um, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? What's the next, next phase of the presentation?
Yep.
Thank you.
Hello.
Um, good afternoon. My name is Tuha Wen. I'm with Via Planning, and I am serving at your traffic engineer, supporting the Chenmore team. So I'm here to present to you the transportation element. And I felt bad because I think I have the best view, but you guys don't. So sorry about that. If you need to turn around, I do not mind at all. So, um, a very quick outline today. I'll very briefly tell you why we do transportation planning. I'll share with you some of the data source that we use. I'll share with you the, the network, um, the roadway network map, nothing new to you at all. And the core of our work, which is the existing network assessment, the short term, which is 2035, and the long term, which is 2045. And then we talk about other modes other than transportation, other vehicular, I should say. I'm going to dive right in. So why we are doing, um, a Com Plan, um, transportation element particularly, we plan for a safe, convenient, multi-motor transportation system. We coordinate, um, plan future land use. So, um, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for kicking that off. That was a really nice little trans, um, handoff, um, to, to my portion. So I appreciate that. And what we do is we design for all element of the compensation, uh, transportation plan. Particularly for transportation, we look at roadway, we look at mass transit, bicycle pedestrian facilities. Um, so I'm going to dive right in. And I know that we hear about level of service quite a bit, so I wanted to be really clear, um, about level of service. Unlike, you know, mommies and daddy on, in the room, we not allow our kid to have anything other than As and Bs, right? If they got seated in trouble. Um, however, when we look at transportation, level of service D is a typical adopted level of service. Meaning once in a while you do have to wait at the light. Once in a while, somebody driving in front of you a little bit slower than you would like them to drive. But by the way, you shouldn't be driving that fast. So perhaps you could potentially slow down. That's my little safety message. When it gets to level of service E, that's when you're a little, you know, iffy, right? Sometimes you have to wait twice at a cycle. Sometimes, um, um, you do have to decide to take another route because it's just really not, not that comfortable to you. When you get to level of service F, you're really not happy anymore, right? So when you think about level of service F would be, um, if you think about a freeway, bumper to bumper traffic. If you want to take an exit, everybody seems to have the same idea of taking the exit. So that's not happening either. So in general, I'd like you to think about level of service D as a standard. And, um, a couple of things I wanted to share with you, um, is for city of Miami, and I know we're not city of Miami, but I wanted to tell you, city of Miami, they actually adopt level of service E plus 20. Meaning they know they're going to be really congested and they're willing to go E plus another 20%. Not quite F, but E plus 20. So it's, it's all relative, right? And then some other, um, I'll tell you a personal story. I was in Wisconsin visiting my sister, and I was at this traffic light, and my knees in the back was like, oh, traffic. And I look around, there are two other cars. So to her, that was traffic. That was just like too many cars on the road. She just wanted to be the only one on the road. So it really is relative. So please do keep in mind that level of service D is what we're talking about. Ooh, I think I went the other way. No, I, I was right. Okay, so for data sources, I wanted to share with you that we start with the adopted 2018 comprehensive plan. And we also look at Palm Beach County TPS, which is Transportation Performance Standards Database. It's a really great database. It's, it's public facing. So if you really, if you just go to, if you Google Palm Beach TPS, you get into this GIS interface map where you can get count, you get to see each of the development, where they are, where they're contributing trip to, um, things like that. So there's a lot of great information, so I want to make sure I share that. DOT also have, um, what they call the four data traffic online. Again, it's outward, um, outward focus, outward facing. So you can just hop on, you, you can look at the information, like where the count, last time the count was taken, what were the historical volume on that particular location? And one thing you will notice is if you zoom into Westlake, there's not a lot of count station. Only because we are what the 39th, um, cities in the Palm Beach, in the county. So we are almost too new. They didn't know what a count yet. So one of the tasks that we're going to be doing at the conclusion is give the county a few locations for them to start monitoring traffic. They might not do immediately, but they're going to try to. And we hope that at least they're going to count every three years, maybe in two years. And when it get more and more, they're hopefully going to count every year for us. Another piece of information I'd like to share this because this is a, a slightly newer way of looking at things, which is contact classification. So in order for us to evaluate whether or not a roadway is performing well, meaning are you better than D? Or you worse than D? You look at volume threshold, right? So I'm just going to give an example. Let's say if, um, you have a two-lane road in a rural condition, going to be a lot different than a two-lane road in a nice neighborhood, right? You're supposed to go kind of nice and slow in a neighborhood, potentially speed bump. That's one of those little kids that say, kid, I play here, please slow down. But this on a rural two-lane, you go a little bit faster, like go around. You're not supposed to be going that fast, but you can potentially go a little bit faster. So based on the contacts, um, FDOT show us, um, give us guidance on what threshold to use. And, um, the rest of it is just really just plans and it's almost as if we contributing to the master plan. And then eventually, I'm sure the next time when we do this update again, that's going to be one of the item bullet items I, I use here. We give them input, they look at their money, they look at their, um, needs, they look at their growth potential, and then they figure out where they, where and when they can build what road. So similarly, we're going to take that into account for our analyses. So, um, I talked about contact classification really quick. In, um, Palm Beach County, we have a variety of classification. Start with probably C2, which is, um, signal, I'm sorry. I know classification two, so we call C2 rural, all the way to probably C5, which is urban center. We don't quite have urban core, maybe the very bit of downtown West Palm Beach would be urban core. But the, so we somewhere in between. Particularly in Westlake, um, we will see Pratt Whitney having a C2 classification. And the rest of it, I don't think I need to tell you, is C3C or C3R, which is suburban residential. We're not quite urban, we're not quite rural, so we're somewhere in between with suburban. So it's not really, right? Pretty relatable. I'm moving right along. This, this map is in both of your, um, well, in the transportation plan as well, the element as well, the, um, going of attractive. This is just really our way of segment our different pieces. Because I know our roadway to kind of run into each other and the name get really confusing. So hopefully this is the map that you wanted to refer to if you need to. And I'm just going to move in right along to the, one of the three assessments that we completed for existing roadway condition. And I'm going to put existing in literal code because you see here, there are two small pieces of roadway that will be completed in the last six, in the next six months or so. So we like to get kind of credit for that, right? Because by the time this is adopted and everything, this will become existing. And I'm happy to report that all of the roadways are going to be level of service C or better. So we beat the standards, right? Straight up in, in, um, currently. I'm moving right along to 2035. A couple of things I wanted to point out, and I know it's a little bit hard to see with the, the red arrows, but the red arrow show you a couple, um, little roadway segments that's going to be new. And also the widening of Pratt Whitney. So I know I'm going to just take a moment to show you that. And I know it might be a little bit easier to see on, on a printed map, but. And once again, I'm also happy to report that for the short-term analyses, with the addition of several different roadway in your city and the widening of Pratt Whitney by 2035, I want to be really clear, we again, going to be operating a level of service C or better. Okay, um, now this one is a little bit trickier. Um, so first of all, do you know that Sixtieth is now going to be widened, our schedule to be widened to four lanes by 2045? All roadway is meeting level of service D with one exception of Passimmons. And I know I so go that right there, but I do wanted to share with you the very next segment. So as you know, right now, this is what Passimmons look like. But I do wanted to give credit for the designer and everybody on staff to plan for the widening. Because what happened is that the soil has been in place, the sidewalk has been in place, all of the vegetation is in place and beautiful. So if you need to widen this road, it's kind of an easy peasy. You're not, you're not digging up anything. Close that road for days and months and get a lot of complaint. So you have been incredibly thoughtful in, in anticipating this already. So, um, Chenmore and us and, and the, the, what, what we've been trying to do very closely is we monitor development and we keep track of every single new development that coming in. So for us, because we are in the planning group, we looked at, um, we look at things like, okay, how many units going to be there and where the traffic going to go? And wait, isn't there another one that we about to approve next week? You know, so we look at that comprehensively, right? Comprehensively. And then the moment that we reaching the, the, the threshold, we sound a really loud alarm and someone going to come out there, um, for roadway winding. So we really truly hope that the winding going to be minimal impacts, not like you're going to have to dig up the road or anything to, to plant a new one. Okay, I'm moving right along to auto modes, um, pedestrian and, um, and pedestrian, bicyclists and pedestrian. So as a part of the mobility vision for the city, we wanted to reduce the need for motorized transportation within the city. And we, um, I think you guys one of the better city that planned for this. I'm so happy to see golf cart parking. I think one of the last time I came here was a beautiful afternoon, and I took that picture and I thought it was just fantastic. It was so great. And you have really great, beautiful bike lane. You have great bicycle, um, shared use path. And the, I have to tell you, just about every other month or so, um, Ken or someone on staff would call and say, hey, so-and-so need this, what can we do to help? And so there's always constant improvement to your network, which is really, really, really great to see. So one thing that we're going to continue to do here is, um, we're going to see what's next, right? So I'm sure you see the little scooter, the little two-wheel one to the front, one to the back. At some point, we might have scooter parking. Because kids can just hop on the scooter on this like really nice separated chair use path, and they just scoot themselves to school, to grocery store, whatever it is. And if it's a great safe place for them to park, then that's great. What we don't want is just all of those things just cut up everywhere and just unsafe for them, unsafe for other people to run over them. So there's a lot of little things like that, micro mobility, we call them. And again, I think 10 years ago, I didn't know the scooter going to be a thing, and it's totally a thing. So 10 years from now, we don't know what going to be the thing anymore. So we hope to continue to monitor what's next and continue to improve the infrastructure to support whatever mode come our way. So this is already your future bicycle and pedestrian network. And what I'm saying here is if you overlay this onto your roadway network, it's exactly the same. So for every single new road that you have, you have a fantastic bicycle and pedestrian roadway network to support the auto mode, very, very much consistent with the vision for the city. Um, as a part of our elements, we also look at other modes other than, you know, biped. As a part of our elements, we also look at other modes, other than, you know, biped and vehicular. We look at evacuation route. We are not, we don't have any evacuation route within the city at all. We look at transit. Currently, there's no Palm tram service to the city. However, we have been talking about a shuttle service to auto mode, and it will continue. Similarly, there is in any airport, the closest one to us is seven miles away. At some point, there was a conversation about perhaps a new runway. We don't have any information on that, this might just go away, and I don't want it to alarm you, this runway is likely going to be for tiny little plane, either by personal use or agriculture, you know, sometimes they just get up there to water their plant and what, things like that. So it's nothing that you have to worry about. And then last, last but not least, is the port of Palm Beach is over 13 miles away. So all of these we need to look at, and we're not close to any water bodies at all, so we're not anticipating being a port anytime soon, but all of this is things that we have to look at. So I think that's the last of my slide, so I'm happy to answer any question you might have.
Thank you so much for that presentation. I certainly appreciate it. Question, the C2 classification, how does that get determined and who sets it?
So typically, DOT, right now DOT is the only agency that set the classification.
Factors into that, what's the formula?
A couple of things. One is what land use around it. So I wanted to kind of paint two separate picture, and perhaps it would help you. Let's say if I look at a two-lane road on the way to the Keys, there's not a lot of shops around, any resident is a little bit far away, right? So if you envision that, while, let's say if you have a two-lane in downtown Lake Worth Beach, it's two-lane, but all the roadway, all of the, either business or houses are right adjacent to the road, and there's awning, there's place for folk to stop, if they wanted to walk another block, they can stop. So everything from block side, meaning how frequent the driveway and the roadway network is, to what kind of characteristic there are within that.
Well, I mean, and the reason I ask is, obviously, the area that surrounds Westlake is going to be rural, but I was really under the impression that we were suburban strong.
Not quite yet. So I think what happened is that if you look at the whole entire Seminole Pratt as the whole, you're special. You know, you have a town, you know that already. So when you look at the whole entire road, you might be a little bit different than them, but as a whole, it's still an R2. Yeah. So my thought is that when the city plan to widen the road, which is really soon, one of the most important things they have to do is to figure out kind of contact classification. And I know it's very subtle, so I want to make sure I point it out. Earlier, I talked about system classification, meaning very general, big picture, planning, big picture type thing. When they look at the corridor, they do what they call project level contact classification. So they literally look at block by block by block. They look at census block, not just track, not just, and much, much bigger scale. Look at tiny little, tiny little data along the way, and they say, hmm, you know, there's no way this is going to be built. Ooh, wow, this could allow up to that capacity, or this could be allow up to that intensity. So with all of that, they, they being DOT and a big group, a multidisciplinary group that they meet, I think, every Monday at 1:30, if I'm not mistaken, so they talk about each of those project. So we definitely can provide input.
When it comes to LRTP and, like, take this brand-new school, for instance, that we're getting a brand-new school, and it's within city limits right next to residential roads, how's that being anticipated in terms of managing the growth?
The future flow, yeah. Yeah. So for LRTP, I wanted to kind of step back a little bit to talk to you about the RTP process. So long-range transportation process have kind of two component. And the best way you can think about it is, one is the roadway network itself, and I think of it as like a skeleton, so literally just skeleton, right? And then the other one is what I call the meat, which is the socioeconomic data underneath it. And the socioeconomic data, as you can imagine, is have population, employment, but it goes a little bit deeper than that. It's like, wait, wait, so you're saying there are 50% male, 50% female, well, tell me something, I don't know, obviously, okay. Wait, wait, no. So this, here's the income ranges, and here are the auto ownership ranges. This many percentage had three or more car in their house, this many have two more car in the house, this many has one car, this many have no car at all. So all of that get factor in, right? And then it's also look at sample, sample side, I want to make sure, where you go, where you live, and where you work. So, and majority, that is the major trip, right? So you live here, you work here, here is the way to get there. And then you live here, you work here, you also go this way. But then when there are too many of you going on some way, it's just like, hmm, I, no, 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 this is too crowded, I don't want it to go on this route, I'm going to go on a better route now. So basically, the transportation planning process kind of shake things up and say, okay, you know, after a while, you find your own way, right? You know how the first day of school, it just jam-packed, and then the next day, everybody go a little bit earlier, and somebody go a little bit later, and then the following day, you found a shortcut around the back of the school, that sort of thing. So transportation planning, in long-range transportation planning, it does exactly that, which is kind of a really neat way. But in addition to it, so there's all the project that I wanted to build. And they look at, okay, so how much money am I going to bring in, and what sort of funding, what sort of grant, what sort of, all of that money piece, and between the two, the balance to get a cost feasible plan? Yeah. So I know it's a really long answer to what you're saying, but what happened is that when there is a new school, I'm coming back to it, I know, I know, I'm coming back to it, I promise, I'm coming back to it. So with the new school, what happened is, do you remember earlier when I said there's a certain socioeconomic data that I, we know as a transportation planner? We also know how many kids you have in that household, right? Maybe not exactly how many kids, but the percentage of kids under 18, meaning the kids are going to go to school. So right now, I know you have to go there, you have to go here, you have to go here, but no more, because it's a perfectly good school in your city now. So all that trip get a lot closer to your city, so there will be fewer trip on.
That's been factored in.
Exactly.
It is being factored in.
Absolutely.
Promise?
100%. In fact, it's actually called special generator, a school.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, manager, please.
Sorry.
To correct me if I'm wrong, but in the master plan, as it was originally done, the schools in the location and within the city was already accounted for in the original traffic counts and master transportation plans, correct?
I wanted to correct one word you said, not traffic count, traffic volume, because count to me is like literally what I count out there, and volume is.
Traffic volumes, for the new school, it's already accounted in the original master plan.
Correct.
And the master transportation traffic counts that were supposed to be.
And that would be considered what, AADT?
So AADT is an average annual daily traffic. Yeah, so basically, it's on, if I take a sample day, any day, it will be a Tuesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday normally, on a typical weekday without any shoulder holidays, not the day when all the snowbirds are here, not the day when all the snowbird, that would be an AADT, how many, the number of volume.
There's a lot of very, very concerned constituents about the traffic patterns going to be very congested right in front of the school, and reasonably so, and I'd like to tell them with confidence that we have it under control.
Absolutely. And in fact, you, in some way, development is always seem tough to think about, because yes, let's say if you have a new Costco, not, you will have a Costco, I'm just saying, let's say if you have a new Costco.
You get my whole city.
A whole bunch of people who, in your city, who would have gone to the other Costco, now would no longer to go to the other Costco, they're going to go closer, so that the trip get a lot shorter. Same with gas station, right? Same with grocery store. If you have another public, you're not going to the old one anymore, you go to the newer one, because it's closer to home, and it's on your way home from work. So with development, things just work better.
Well, does anybody have any questions for Ms. Toa?
Of course. Thank you for your presentation.
Of course.
I have a few questions. On Persimmon, you showed the slide, it's planned for four lanes, it's only got two lanes now. We just recently approved a housing unit, 448 units, which I believe you reviewed, and it wasn't determined needed to widen that portion of Persimmon.
Correct.
And I'm curious as to what, at what point will that be needed? You know, I talked to the city manager about it, well, whenever the developer crosses that threshold, they'll be obligated to pay for those road improvements. The one that we just approved is almost the end of the road for that area, so I'm curious at what, are we going to be stuck with two lanes? Even though it's been planned for four?
So I will tell you that we will make sure that we have a four-lane in place before you feel that you need a four-lane.
Do you have to know what volume is running through Persimmon?
Lot of hand, I can certainly look at it and let you know.
When you did that analysis for that recent project, was there a traffic count done on Persimmon?
I would have to look at my notes.
Okay. I'm curious, what percentage of full capacity is that roadway at right now? So that's one question, if you can get back to us. The other one, on the slide that you showed, future roadways within the next six months, you showed Persimmon going all the way to 140, and I believe we're only going 200 feet short of 140. Shouldn't the rest of that be dotted? I assume that's an illustration that will be in the updated plan.
Yes, perhaps I need to make sure that I am a little bit clearer on the limit. Because of the scale, I think it's might be, and I'm just not, the way that we show is, the scale is quite large, but I would make sure that I check on that.
And then I'm looking at your policy document for evacuation routes. T 1.3.1, these are for escape routes from the city. It says coordinate with Palm Beach County to ensure the adopted LOS standard is maintained on Seminole Pratt-Whitney. Doesn't say what that standard is.
So.
We know today that it's probably running at E.
Actually, it's not. It's actually not. So the adopted level of service, and the reason that we kept it vague, because it's not vague, level of service D for any non-rural area is always level of service D.
D.
D, A, B, C, D, D-A-D-O-G-E.
Why would we say that that, that our expectation should only be level Z as an evacuation route? It says, just as adopted LOS standard.
We could certainly add that, yeah, to be really clear that it is level of service D. Yeah. And so I wanted to quickly talk about evacuation. So you know how we love our houses, and we love our cars, we never want to leave our house and our cars? So in order for us, when we do long-range planning, as a part of the planning, we do what we call hurricane evacuation modeling. So we said, okay, from the data that we have, the X amount of us will evacuate. And of those that going to evacuate, X amount of us will go to enabling France in south, northeast, west of here. Some of us would only go to shelter, and some of us with a pet would only go to shelter with pet. So there's a whole bunch of scenarios like that. So the reality of it is that since you are really quite west of just about anything else, the evacuation route that we worry about most is really making sure that the resident, if they choose to live there, to leave their house, to go on to Pratt-Whitney, south or north, to get out and go east, to get to 95 or 105.
That's the only way to go.
Right. And I will assure you that you won't have a problem.
Really? Okay. One last question, on the illustration that you showed, 60th East of Seminole Pratt as a future road, my understanding is that that right-of-way is fully within the city of Westlake? Is that correct?
Yes, the right-of-way is within the city limits, however, the road is county's road. Same as Seminole Pratt is within the city limits, but it is a county road, under county jurisdiction only.
Who would be responsible for building that road? I know county would maintain it.
County.
The county would build it.
County builds it, maintains it.
It's not our road. Yeah.
But we keep talking.
When will that happen?
It's on their five-year plan. When it's going to happen, there's been roads on their five-year plan for 20 years, so, you know, it's, your guess is as good as mine.
They came.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
No.
Thank you so very, very much. Are there any more presentations?
No, that's it, I believe.
So that concludes our workshop for the elements that we have for today. The next workshop will include, we're going to talk about conservation, recreation, and open space, intergovernmental coordination, and that will be almost all of the elements to move forward, so.
A little more excitement, Osneel. Come on. Thank you so much. I appreciate you. Any comments from the council?
Thank you, Osneel.
Any comments from the council?
No.
Uh, city manager comments?
I have no additional.
City attorney? Is that it, sir? No, he is. No comments? Okay. Public comment? Section of the agenda, last for comments, for the public to speak, each speaker will be given a total of three minutes. Public comment card should have been completed and returned to the city clerk. When you're called, please state your name and address for the record. Madam clerk, did you have any public comments on the pump plan presentation?
There are no public comment cards, mayor.
Anybody want to talk about the presentation we just had? No? Okay. I will adjourn at 5:48 PM. Thank you.